We're going to call a meeting to order. First item is the invocation and we'll have Ryan Chaplin, Bob Killen lead us in that and after that Paul Schaefer will lead us in the pledge.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for this day and for your many blessings that you pour out upon our lives and for the opportunity, dear God, to serve you and the opportunity, dear Lord, to be able to share in these times. And we pray, Father, your special blessing upon this event, upon this meeting. We pray for the mayor, the town council, and all who are involved. We just ask your special blessing upon these proceedings that you would get honor and glory and praise. We're so grateful for all that you do for us and we want to honor and praise you in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item is roll call. Diane?
Mayor Scoog.
President.
Vice Mayor Nye.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Here.
And Councilmember Grossman.
I'm here too.
Thank you. We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we'll move on to the scheduled announcements and presentations. Chamber of Commerce, Gloria and Zach, welcome.
Thank you for the privilege of giving us the opportunity to introduce new businesses to you that have come to our area, joined our chamber, and I want to introduce Colleen from N1 Health. Hello. Finding a physician that's a good fit can be a real challenge these days.
Mayor Scoog.
Fellow council members and honored guests, let me ask you a few questions. Does your primary care physician have time to really figure out what's going on inside of you, to look for the root cause of your disease? Does he have time to answer your questions and your concerns? Does your primary care physician have a full-time health coach on staff? If the answer to that is yes, or if you're looking to have the answer to that to be yes, let me introduce you to Dr. Morris's N1 Health practice. Dr. Morris has been practicing in Prescott Valley for 30 years. A year and a half ago, he's converted his practice to a private membership practice, which allows him to spend quality time with his patients. He never sees over eight to 10 patients a day. He has a full-time health coach on staff, as I mentioned. He also has advanced diagnostics in-house to figure out what's going on inside of you. He has a carotid artery ultrasound to really give you a window of your health and he can tell you your carotid artery age. How many doctors can tell you that these days? Dr. Morris also has full-time health coaches on staff, as I mentioned, who has an in-body machine that can figure out your body composition, how much body fat you have compared to how much muscle mass you have, which gives you a measurement and a monitor on your health. If you're interested in finding out more, we would love to have you over and would be honored to partner with you in building and restoring your health. I brought a trifold with me and I'd be honored if I could give one to each of you. And we are located on 3200 North Windsong and our telephone number is 928-772-1505. Thank you very much for this time.
Thank you, Colleen, and yes, you may pass those out.
Thank you. I also wanted to introduce Zach Hurt. He's doing our membership services. This is his first council meeting, so I just wanted to introduce him and give him a minute to say hi to all of you.
Hi. I know a few of you and it's really great to be here. Everybody with the town has been so welcoming and so great and it's just been such a fun, loving experience and I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Good to see you, Zach.
Yeah, you as well.
Thank you so much.
Okay, how was it then, Gloria? Student of the Month, Mike. All welcome and family. Good heart, appreciate you being here.
Well, we're happy to be here this evening to welcome our student of the month and this is something that we feel is very special in Prescott Valley, especially to see our recognized youth excel. And this is one way to do it and we do appreciate the help of Bradshaw Mountain High School as well as the town of Prescott Valley and the Rotary Club of Prescott Valley. So we're here to really recognize Paul Schaefer this evening and he's one individual out of many at Bradshaw Mountain High School who go to school every day, but he's been recognized for the achievements that he's accomplished both at school, outside of school, and we're here to celebrate that this evening. Some of the things that I thought might be worthwhile to talk about and it's one of these things that I think is unusual tonight because Rotary sponsors the Youth of the Month and Paul is very active in the Interact Club, which is a Rotary-sponsored type of a program. And he's indicated to us that he has been involved with several projects within Interact. One has been through a lot of the different clubs in the area, Feed My Starving Children project, and I think he indicated as part of that this last project that they served their 1 millionth meal. I'm sure Paul wasn't involved with all million of those, but I'm sure he was very close in serving those. He's been a historian for the Interact Club. He coordinated the Facebook entity for the club. He's also part of Ryla, which is a Rotary entity. So as you can tell, I'm pushing Rotary today really hard. And Ryla is Rotary Youth Leadership and so he's been very much involved in leadership activities and I think obviously is showing now as we are here to recognize him. He's also involved with an organization that I was involved with, Prescott Area Leadership, and there is a Prescott Area Youth Leadership that he's been involved with. So obviously that's been on his mind for a few years and I think that's one reason he's here is to become a leader in his community and become a leader at school and we appreciate that. One thing I will indicate that is close to my heart because my younger son is a math teacher in Chandler and he loves math and apparently you've been in advanced math for four years, so obviously that's something you very much enjoy and do well. And his grade point average, and I'll leave the rest of the information to Court Miner or the principal in terms of some of the other school-related achievements he's made, but his grade point average is 3.563, which is very nice. Court Miner, would you like to take over and give us a little more information about Paul Schaefer?
Thank you, Michael. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, distinguished guests. I'm Court Miner, proud principal of Bradshaw Mountain High School, and we're here tonight to honor Paul Schaefer. Michael talked about a lot of Paul's leadership involvement on campus, but he's also involved in two really big programs near and dear to my heart at the high school and one is called our LINK program. And our LINK program is we find leaders on our campus, junior and senior year, and when our eighth graders are making the transition to high school, we have a big event in the summertime where we bring all the eighth graders in. And each of the eighth graders, excuse me, future freshmen are assigned to one leader. And so you have eight to nine students per leader and that leader throughout the year in the LINK program not only gets them accustomed to school and breaks the ice, teaches them the rules, but they're there for the students throughout the year to ask questions, why are you struggling, what's going on with your grades, where's the bathroom, how do we give money, you know, how do we get lunch in the cafeteria? And Paul is one of our very involved LINK leaders. Secondly, we also have a program at our campus called AVID and that is Advancement Via Individual Determination. And you can see why Paul's involved with the AVID program just because of his own individual determination. But I want to end on just a quick note because I have students at the high school who have been in elementary and middle school and come to the high school and they can sometimes struggle, but Paul didn't start school until he was in sixth grade. That was his first time, his first, you know, eye-opening experience was sixth grade and here he is in the high school with a 3.56 GPA and a top 20% in our class. So for any of those people out there that say you can't do it, Paul says you can. So I'd like to introduce Paul Schaefer.
I would like to thank Mr. Miner for the school principal and I'd like to thank Rotary International. I'd like to thank the council of Prescott Valley and my family.
Paul, would you introduce your family too?
This is my mom, Colleen Schaefer. This is my dad, Rodney Schaefer. This is my little brother, Isaac. My younger brother, Jacob. My older sister, Ruth. My younger sister, Beth. My younger sister, Janetta. And my younger sister, Amanda.
Paul, it's with our sincere pleasure that we recognize you tonight and congratulate you and we have a few things just to recognize you and a memento, I think, of the occasion. And one is a certificate indicates Paul Schaefer and I don't know if we spelled your last name correctly. Okay, so we're going to put another F in there, but you're January Student of the Month for Bradshaw Mountain High School, Student of the Month for Rotary Club of Prescott Valley and for the town of Prescott Valley as well. So hopefully you'll hang that proudly somewhere. And then we do have a memento paperweight as you do your work at school and move on and we always say we hope to see you back here to contribute as a productive member of Prescott Valley and we hope you can do that, but this says Student of the Month, Prescott Valley, Arizona with the Rotary logo. So hopefully you use that and once again, congratulations to you and your family and we appreciate the contribution that Paul makes to our community. So thank you.
What a family and congratulations. Okay, we'll move on into Prescott Valley, Early Birds 30th Anniversary Lions. And I guess you'll all come up front. We'll meet you there. Oh, greetings, gentlemen, ladies. Oh, they can join us. Larry, come on and join us. And who's the other one? Oh, Rick, Rick, Rick maybe, he just had knee surgery, so. Okay.
Why he can't go.
You have a proclamation, Diane?
Yes, we do, Mayor.
Okay, great.
Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club Day, January 23, 2015. Whereas Lion Clubs International was founded in 1917 and is the largest service club organization in the world with more than 1.35 million members in more than 46,000 clubs in 200 countries worldwide. And whereas the Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club was chartered on December 31, 1984 and currently has 49 members actively volunteering and supporting in its many programs. And whereas the Prescott Valley Lions Early Bird Lions Club serves the community through sight and hearing programs, feeding the hungry and aiding seniors and the disabled, they also care for the environment and are a part of a global service network of volunteers that make a difference in their community. And whereas the Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club is proud to coordinate the annual Prescott Valley Days Parade. And whereas the Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club contributes to the Prescott Valley community and its citizens by living its motto of "We Serve." Now therefore, in recognition of the 30th anniversary of the Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club, I Harvey C. Scoog, Mayor of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim January 23, 2015 as Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club Day and urge everyone to join in recognizing these outstanding volunteers.
Now if I can have our weak kneed member make some comments, Rick?
Other than the fact that I had my total knee replacement done two weeks ago, I would have been standing down there with you, but even though I can walk that far, I can't stand that long, so congratulations. It's been my pleasure to be a member of your organization for nearly eight years now and you guys do a great job. Thank you very much.
Gloria, do you handle introductions?
Oh, as president, I should know everybody, right? Matt Zercher, Bruce Riley, John Ingham, John Aim, um, shoot. Lonest, John Lonest, sorry. Bill Gross, Kevin Cook, Bob Killen, Steve Rutherford, Danny Pruse, Frank Oxborough, Larry Tarkowski, and our very own Rick Anderson up there. And this is just a small portion of our guys. So like I said, we have 49 members, so we love being involved in our community and thank you for this proclamation, Mayor.
I think what I just want to say is without you, our community wouldn't be as wonderful as we all know it is. Thank you for everything you do for us.
Now who is a spokesperson in addition to Gloria? Everybody's pointing at you, Steve.
Been here a long time, good group. You were one of our charter members, Harvey. I remember, that's right. Anyhow, we're glad to serve Prescott Valley because that's what we do. We serve.
It's good people like you that make it all worthwhile and you just make it better. So we do appreciate your service. We appreciate what you do. Keep up the good work. Got a comment? Don't open that door, somebody says. Wow. Anyone else got a comment? Good, we sure appreciate all of you. Keep up the good work. Thank you, Gloria. Okay, next thing is comments and communications. Council, have any comments? Communications, anyone? No? Okay, if there being none, then we'll move on to number seven. All matters listed on the consent agenda, these are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. If there will be no separate discussion of these items, if discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. This includes the approval of January 8 council meeting minutes and executive meeting minutes, department reports, monthly financial reports, council investment report, and approving accounts payable. Anyone want to pull an item and approve it as a whole?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve all items listed on the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
And we have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote, Diane? And that passes, thank you. Okay, move on to number eight. Consideration of appointing Gary Kyle to the Board of Adjustments. Laura, you have any comments?
I do indeed, Mayor, thank you. On January 31, 2015, Gary Kyle's term on the Board of Adjustments will come due for renewal. He submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Gary Kyle was first appointed to a partial term on this board on April 9, 2012, and this reappointment will be his second consecutive term. And Gary, we'd like you to come forward. Thank you very much for making the effort to be here. And before we go on, we most humbly want to extend our appreciation to you for wanting to be reappointed and maybe you'd share with us why you're willing to do that.
I want, first of all, thank you for reappointing me. It's been a pleasure serving.
Do you put the mic up a little bit?
The reason why I decided to get on the board is because of my past experience with city government the last, I just retired about four years ago and I got 27 years in city government and I'm just too old to call it a day yet. Or too young, maybe.
Good for us.
But in the background, of course, I was a city building official out of California, so I just, I feel like with my expertise, I can help serve the community.
Well, you are ideally certified to serve on this important commission and we, well, board and we appreciate it immensely. Would you like to make a motion? I'm sure Mary will second it.
Certainly, I'll make a motion. Motion to reappoint Gary Kyle to the Board of Adjustment to a term with a renewal date of January 31, 2018 by electronic vote.
And I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Will you set the vote, Diane?
It's all legal now.
Gary, thank you so much. We appreciate your experience and your service.
Thank you.
And thank you for making the effort to come out in person. We appreciate that very much.
Good. Okay, the next B. Consideration of appointing James Gamble to the Board of Adjustments. Laura?
Right. Mr. Gamble was not able to be with us unless he got his schedule cleared. And on January 31, 2015, Mr. Gamble's term on the Board of Adjustment will come due for renewal. He submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Mr. Gamble was first appointed to a partial term on this board on March 26, 2009, and this reappointment will be his third consecutive term. Notice, he's willing to serve a third consecutive term. We are so grateful, not only that people come forth to volunteer, but the quality of the volunteers in our community make a big difference for us. So Mary, would you be willing to make a motion?
I would. Motion to reappoint James Gamble to the Board of Adjustments to a term with a renewal date of January 31, 2018.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do you set the vote, Diane? And that again passes unanimously. Okay, now we're going to get to other business. Consideration of approving resolution number 1902, approving the attached developments agreement with Prescott Valley Investment Group, LLC, an entity related to Little Dealer Little Prices, and welcome here. Greg?
Mayor and council, the next two agenda items are development agreements with two longtime Arizona businesses. Little Dealer and Little Prices and Earnhardt Auto are both family-owned businesses that have been in Arizona for over 50 or about 50 years and Earnhardt's case, more than 60 years. Both were looking to expand their businesses and both were looking at the Quad City area in which to do so and both have chosen Prescott Valley to invest millions of dollars. They had choices, believe me, they had choices and they chose Prescott Valley. So first I want to get to Little Dealer, Little Prices. First met with them seven, eight months ago. They were exploring land, buying land in Eastridge when we met them after looking at the area for probably months. They ended up purchasing 11 acres at Eastridge and as you know, Eastridge has a CFD and that CFD was formed back in the early 2000s in order to provide public infrastructure like the streets, sidewalks, water and sewer, et cetera. The assessment left on the 11 acres that Little Dealer, Little Prices purchased is about $143,000. The agreement before you requires the town to pay that $143,000 over four years and return they agree to open and operate at that location. If for any reason they do not by the year, by June 2018, then the payments would cease. We believe the $143,000, we as a staff believe the $143,000 paid over four years is just a fraction of the sales tax that this project will generate. For example, the four years, again, we're looking at about, in rough terms, it's in your packet, but in rough terms, we're talking about $35,000 a year for four years in that neighborhood. That's the assessment value. The bonds for the entire district are paid off in June 2018, but we believe that $143,000 during that four-year time period will generate probably between $500,000 to $600,000 in sales taxes. If you take that out to 10 years, that $143,000, the towns return that on that $143,000 will be somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.5 to $1.9 million. And I'm conservative, as my boss will tell you, I usually go low. I'm not sure what else you'd like me to say on this issue. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. It's a different sort of deal than we've done before in the past because we've never done a deal as it relates to CFDs, but this is one, so I'll be glad to take any questions.
Steve, you got a question?
I just wanted to ask one main question because I've had a couple of people ask why we're willing to pay that part of the CFD. Well, if they don't come, the town's on the line for that money anyway, correct?
If they don't come, well, number one, they've already bought the property and they spent quite a bit of money doing that, but that's, set that aside for a second. If they never open, there are no payments made. They have to make the payments because they own the property. And actually, if there's a, and I'll let Ivan discuss this, but there's a reserve credit that each property owner there has as it relates to the bond sale and a reserve credit is money that's placed aside to guard against any default on the bonds. And so their reserve credit is about $35,000. Again, the total amount is in your packet, I think it's $34,000 something. If they do not, if they are not operating in June 2018 when the last payment is due, we will take that money, we will, under the agreement. If you have any other questions about reserve credit, I'll let our lawyer talk about it.
Well, I know what most of our citizens want to know because I've been a customer down in the valley and all my children are customers. When will you hope to open? I'm going to jump right there.
Well, they are here and they have a little presentation they'd like to do, so if you
We'll hold our questions.
By all means introduce them and sure, not for our audience here too, but also for TV audience.
Who's coming up? Paul Bruno Forte?
And Debbie and Danny and Tamra. Come on up, ladies too. Come on up.
That's so good to see you folks, we really appreciate that.
Well, I've been appointed the spokesperson, because I know the least about RVs, but I, I want to take a couple of minutes to share some of what we've been dreaming about. So Mr. Mayor, council members, and what few guests are remaining, Greg, and the city of Prescott Valley staff who've been encouraging us to come here, but we're very excited about this opportunity. And I also want to point out, Michael and I have been Toastmasters for many times, so Michael, would you count my ahs and ums while I'm doing this here? Good. We're excited about the possibility of coming to Prescott Valley. We've been admiring this area for many, many years, and we started in 2010, exploring the idea of coming up to this general area. And the founder of our company, Roy Sampson, who happens to be my father-in-law, and Debbie and Danny's dad, moved to Prescott in 2001 and fell in love with the area. And he kept telling us, we've got to have a business up here. So we had always been having our eye up here, our kids went to camp here up in Prescott, so we really love the area. So it was in our hearts that sometime we may be able to make it up here. But what happened, Dad passed away a few years ago, but before he passed away, he said, if there's any way that we can survive the Great Recession, we really should come back up here and consider having a business here in Prescott Valley. So we did thankfully survive the recession, so we started to come back up here and take a look at this great area. A big fan of yours, JT Purvis, showed us Prescott Valley, he showed us Prescott, we looked at Prescott, there were many opportunities in Prescott for us also, but showed us Prescott Valley, and we really felt like Prescott Valley was the place for us. So that's why we really started taking it very seriously. And as Greg mentioned, we did look for more than months. It's been probably a year and a half of coming up here, checking out various places. So we finally found a site. JT helped us think a little bigger than we were originally thinking, and so I wanted to give you a little background. I was told to have about five minutes, so if that's okay, I'd like to give you a little background about Little Dealer to let you know about us. Roy and Vivian Sampson opened up Little Dealer almost 60 years ago. And we opened up the first dealership in Mesa, Arizona, which is still there today, and it looks like a big fort. If Laura, if you've been down there, you know what that looks like. And then in 1976, we opened up a second location at Indian School Road and I-17. 30 years, and thousands of happy customers later, we opened up our third dealership at Deer Valley Road and I-17. We had the challenge of finishing that dealership right in the depths of the Great Recession. So we learned how to scramble, and we really did scramble. But that dealership, which has over 25 service bays, became an attraction for many dealers throughout the country. We have dealers coming in, coming down, taking a look at that dealership, because Little Dealer has the reputation of being an exciting and fun place. And if you come to our campgrounds, you will feel that you've actually stepped into another time. That dealership has become the template for what we think we could do here in Prescott Valley, and even go to another level. So here's what our current ideas are, and I did bring a slide that shows an artist's rendering and a little floor plan, but here's what we would like to do. We would, we've always felt that providing sales and service is important to be a good dealer, but we want to be a great dealer. So we have an idea for Prescott Valley that we haven't done anywhere else. Our dream is to be a regional full-service RV facility for all of northern and central Arizona. We hope to draw people from other parts of the state to vacation here, due to our unique idea of having an RV storage and concierge service. So owning and using an RV with Little Dealer will be the easiest and most hassle-free and a new business model for us. So imagine that you own a towable or motorized RV. When you want to go camping, you simply make a phone call, you call us, we get your RV, we pull it out, we clean it, we wash it, we fill it with propane, we fill it with water, get it fully serviced, and you're on your way. Spend your time camping, you pull it in, you get out, and you go home, we will clean it and put it back into storage for you. We'll also do any kind of minor repairs or any service that you determine you need. So it's a complete full service. We'll actually even, if you call us up, we'll buy you food and stock it for you if you want. Now, people who live in Flagstaff in northern Arizona, they can store their vehicles here in the warmer weather that we have here during the winter, and the people in Phoenix can store it here and be two hours closer to camping, and they would not have to tow their vehicles up the mountain. So it'd be really a great opportunity.
That's excellent.
So let me tell you why I think we can do this, and many other dealers can't. Little Dealer, Little Prices was awarded the honor of the top RV dealership in Arizona by the RV Business Publications, and we were also honored by them by being one of the top 50 dealers in the USA and Canada. In addition, we're recognized by them as among the 100 most influential businesses in RV history. There's only eight other dealers within that 100 that share that. Additionally, and I got to brag a little bit now about my honey, additionally, in August, Debbie was inducted to the RV Hall of Fame, and she's the first and only female RV dealer ever to get such an honor. She's the past chairman of Recreational Vehicle Dealers Association, and she currently heads three industry groups that are responsible for RV technician training, industry relations, and she's on the Board of Go RV Marketing. So Debbie is very immersed in the business. As a matter of fact, if you go anywhere in the country and talk to any manufacturer, they know Debbie. So she, so we're able to get some great products as a result of her involvement in the industry. And finally, Little Dealer is the number one seller of towable RVs in Arizona, and received an A-plus rating from the Better Business Bureau. So this is who has the potential of coming here, and we're really excited about this opportunity. And I'll tell you, don't just take my word for everything I just said here, please come visit. Now Laura's been to our dealerships, but come visit our dealership at Deer Valley and I-17, or the one in Mesa on Country Club near McKeliffe's, and you'll see what we're talking about. So I've got a rendering here, if you guys take a look at this, this is an artist's conception of what we, what we'd like to do. And it's about 18,500 square feet under roof, but we also have a total of 11 acres. And our plan is to take four of those acres, three to four of those acres, and use that for RV storage. And we'll have a full parts and service facility there, and, anything else that we're going to have to then? And of course, RV sales, which, which is, goes without saying. But that's, that's the idea, that's what it's probably going to look like. We really liked, we had the artists take a couple of colors and everything, so we really think that that's going to be very close to what it looks like. And be happy to answer any questions.
I was wondering if 11 acres will be enough?
Well, it's twice as big as anything we've ever had before. Our dealership in, at Deer Valley and I-17, which was our biggest dealership, has six acres. So this is twice the size, and you have JT Purvis to thank for introducing us to that.
I can see that Tamara wants to make some comments. 20 minutes?
She's been a great cheerleader. Yeah, she's been a great cheerleader and helped me script a little bit of this tonight, which I kind of went off of, but Debbie, I don't know if you--
Debbie, any comments?
I think you said it all--
You used a microphone.
Thank you for giving this an opportunity to talk with you this evening, and like Paul said, we, we did have other choices in the area. My dad actually lived in Prescott, not Prescott Valley, but after researching the area, meeting all the people that are involved with Prescott Valley, you, somebody, you said it earlier, you really are very welcoming, and we, we just feel that this is our home. Danny and Tamara will be moving up here, even sitting here tonight, Danny said, I just love this place.
Oh, welcome, we appreciate it. One more comment. You're up next. 20 minutes.
W is saying, I do love the city, I appreciate the prayer before the meeting, and that's about it. I thank you for the opportunity.
I want my question answered.
Laura?
Are you ready to answer my question?
Oh, the timing, okay.
Our citizens want to--
Okay, if everything goes well, the idea would be for us is to have a temporary facility open some, sometime in April, mid-April, to have a temporary facility open with the full facility open in October, November. And so that would be our ideal scenario, no later than December.
Outstanding.
So that, that's, that's what we're excited about. We've, we've met, there's a lot of people who we've talked to so far, and, and we really feel like we've got the right subcontractors and everything to go ahead with this project.
Excellent.
Good. Other question?
Just one quick question. Besides sales and service, will you also be doing rentals?
Well, we have rentals at Deer Valley, so more than likely, if there's a demand for it up here, we've already have the structure that we can introduce for that. So we do rentals at both of the dealerships. So we, one place rents motor homes, in the other area, we rent some 10-trailer, so we have, and that helps to introduce people to the RV lifestyle. And with gas at $2, it's the best time to do it.
Good. Other questions?
I got one, one small question.
Oh, one more, okay.
First, I wanted to say thank you for coming out and taking time out of your day to come talk to us. And the second one was, how many people do you think you're going to employ at this dealership?
It depends, it depends, of course, on the growth and on the demand, but at the other locations, we generally have about 40 people.
Awesome, thank you.
At each, at each location.
This might even be more, because we want to see just how much service we would be providing through the storage end of it. That's a business that we're kind of new to, and we're working right now, gathering all the information from some other businesses to see what, what that would be involved with as well.
Mary, Laura?
I just wanted to say, you obviously know we're a family-centered community. You fit right in, because I know from my experiences in the valley, you're also family-centered.
Thank you very much. As a matter of fact, for those of you who don't know, at our dealership, it's not unusual for my son to say, Mom, you have a call on line one, Grandma, you're on line two, and Uncle Larry, there's somebody in the lobby to see you. So that's very common in our dealership. Of course, everybody loves it, we have lots of relatives there.
Good. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. It's nice to see Paul again, I think we're both getting more mature.
Yes, I didn't know if you'd recognize me without the hair. Because the last time you saw me, I actually had hair.
And I know your wife is a great spokesman, I've seen her on television before for Little Dealer, so she does a great job. I think you've made a right choice and decision, we're looking forward to, I think it's a great opportunity for us and for you, so welcome to Prescott Valley.
We're really excited about it.
And you talk about hair, you notice that Mike doesn't have a single gray hair, they're all white. Any other questions, Mary?
No, I'm just excited for you guys coming up here, look forward to it, and thank you very much.
Any other?
Any questions?
Be sure, any other questions? We're here to help you make it work.
Yes. So-- Mayor, we got that the first time we met you, which was very early in our exploration. We left just so happy, having met you and the excitement that you instilled in us when we walked out, we were extremely happy, so thank you.
Good, I appreciate that. Any, do you have any other comments?
Nope, you see, unless you want to put the floor plan up there, I don't know if you want to take a look at that, but anyway, it's there, it's there for you to take a look at, I'll leave that with you.
Okay. Are you going to cut just a ribbon, or several?
Well, we'll have the shovel out there and everything ready for you.
Good.
All of the above.
All of the above, good. But we're, we're getting used to that, and we appreciate that. And we give the biggest shovel to Laura. A scoop shovel. Good. Well, thanks so much.
Thank you all very much.
So good to see you, and thank, keep up the good work. Okay, the next one, then we go to--
We can motion?
Oh, I need a motion, yes. Okay, anyone care to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor--
I'll make--
--to make a motion? I beat you. Motion to authorize the mayor, or in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign resolution number 1902, approving the attached development agreement with Prescott Valley Investment Group, LLC, an entity related to Little Dealer, Little Prices, and transfer $33,351 from general fund contingency to general fund non-development economic development incentive budget.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote, Dan? No, I don't know how we did it, seven of us, there's nine votes out there, but congratulations, it's 100%.
All right.
Okay, the next one is consideration of adopting resolution number 1904, approving the proposed development agreement with Presley Investments LLC, an Earnhardt entity, for the development of Volkswagen dealership. Greg?
Mayor and Council, another longtime Arizona business, family-owned, family-run, Earnhardt. They looked also, they had a successful negotiation with Volkswagen, came to an agreement to get a Volkswagen dealership. They determined that the best site for that was just to the east of, or west of the current Kia dealership. The development agreement in front of you requires us to repay the fees that are generated through the building permit process, up to $50,000. We believe it'll be a little bit less than that, but we put a $50,000 cap on it. So basically, what it means is they're going to give us $50,000 or somewhere thereabouts, sometime probably in, I'll let them talk about it, but this spring sometime, and then when they get a certificate of occupancy, which will probably be sometime late in the year, or maybe early in 2016, we will give them money back. The rate of return on that will be, let's put it this way, we think they'll generate sales tax within a couple of months to cover that, that investment. So with that, any questions? Representatives from Earnhardt are here to talk about their project and their timeline, et cetera, et cetera, but any questions?
You want to introduce the representatives?
Yes, we have, and I wrote this down, Scott Clark, the regional director, he's a Kia man, runs the Kia dealerships, and we have Wyn Anderson, he's the general manager up here at the store, right, up here?
Yes.
And who else do we have?
No?
Okay. Okay. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Greg? I think your packet was well done.
I know.
Yeah, we want them to come on up.
Yeah, they're sexier than I am.
Wyn, Scott, come on up.
Thank you for having us.
And you're Wyn?
This is Wyn Henderson, he's, he is actually in Earnhardt.
He's in Earnhardt, I've met him.
Mr. Earnhardt's daughter, so he's a grandson. I'll let him explain the family and then the family timeline, you know, like Little Dealer's Little--
Pull the mic over just a little bit, I mean, so I make sure--
Like them--
--for our TV audience to hear it too.
Yes, sir. Like them, we are a family-owned and operated business since 1951. I've been with the company 23 years. I run all the Kia stores, I'll be running the Volkswagen store also. I have five family members that work for Earnhardt's, all the way from my youngest son, that was 16, my daughter, a niece, a brother, a nephew, so a great organization to work for. They were up here in Prescott a long time ago. We're really anxious to get back into the Prescott Valley market. Again, like them, Volkswagen actually wanted us to put it in Prescott, and Earnhardt said, no, 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 we want it in Prescott Valley, that's where we are.
You made a good choice, by the way.
Yes, sir, I agree. I lived up here when I was in fifth and sixth grade in Prescott Valley. My dad worked for the state Board of Registered Contractors, I've always loved it, so I was anxious to get back up here and be a part of the community again and to see it change. I mean, when I was, when I was a kid, Safeway was the big attraction, you know, Pittsburgh Paints also, you know, so I mean, so I'll let Wyn just explain to you about the--
And I think you should introduce this lady too, is she one of the, no, not one of the--
No, with the--
You're not with it?
We just know her.
Okay.
Just real quick about the Earnhardt organization, still have 10 family members on a day-to-day basis, you know, I got a brother-- basis. You know, I got a brother of mine that runs our Lexus store, another brother that runs our Dodge store. Cousins are involved in the stores as well. Grandpa's still involved to the day-to-day basis, comes into the store every day, still climbs up on the bull, shoot all the commercials, everything like that. I moved up here about a year and a half ago to help run this store when we decided to expand out here to Prescott Valley. My oldest cousin Dodge came to me and asked me if I'd like to come up here. And so I made the move up here. So I actually do live up here. And, you know, I'm happy to be here. Everybody's welcomed me with open arms. And, you know, we're happy to be here as Earnhardt's. My mom actually used to run the Nissan store when I was over in Prescott before it became Lamb's. So I guess you can say it's kind of in my blood to be up here in Prescott, Prescott Valley area. I just want to thank you guys. And I'll turn it back over to Scott to tell you guys more about the store.
Just give you a little bit of history. When we took the Kia store over, it was doing about 25, 30 cars a month. We've raised that to 75 to 90 cars a month. You can calculate based on average sale price of a car, about $16,000, what that's done in tax revenue here. We hope to do, we're not real sure, 25 to 35 to start out with is our performa for the Volkswagen store plus parts service. It's going to be about a 10,500 square foot state-of-the-art building. Use a lot of, Volkswagen is, uses a lot of green materials. The buildings are just beautiful. So we're really excited for this building. We're going to build it right on the same property or just below this property. I believe that closes on Monday, right below the Kia store. It's going to be about two and a half to three acres. It's going to be an incredible facility. We are hoping to break ground by April, May at the latest and be done by 2000, by the end of 2015.
If you need shovels, we'll find some.
I'm willing to shovel. Anything, anything you got, I'll dig. I mean, we want to get, we want to get going quick, trust me.
Good. Anyone good questions? Do you have a question, Steve?
Again, thank you guys for coming. I really appreciate you taking the time out of your day to come here. And I'm just going to ask the same question. How many people do you think you guys are going to be able to employ out there?
Like them, it's the same. We're going to, 15 to 25 to start with. If the business grows, obviously, we're going to add more techs, more salespeople, more managers, a lot of tenants. But on a minimum basis to start with, probably 15 to the 20 range. And then hopefully, within six months, add another three to five people depending on the need. But I think this is going to be a great place for Volkswagen. I think it's going to, we're going to take a lot of market out from the other part of the, I don't want to say any names, but we're, we're planning on taking some of their business. It's a great product. Yeah, and we have, you know, obviously with the Kia sales, and we just continue.
Well, Earnhardt, Wyn has done a super job up here, and we're very appreciative of that. Laura, you have a question?
I, I just wanted to acknowledge that, yes, we do recognize you as a family-oriented business. And so it's all the more purposeful for you to be here in this community and grow with us as we grow. And you are very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the, that's the way the Earnhardt's felt, and that's why they wanted to keep it in the Prescott Valley. They felt this was more of a family-related community, and that's how they are. They're a family. I mean, you'd be surprised how many family members of family members work for them.
And that's just great. Rick, you have a comment? Marty?
I'm just, I'm just glad that Volkswagen dealership is coming up here, having, I have in the past owned one. So they're great cars, and I've seen some of the commercials and some of the accolades that they're getting. So I'm looking forward to it. You know, as I drive around town after I heard about it, and I'm seeing how many Volkswagens are around town. So your service department's going to be busy.
Well, we'll count you as our first sale, sir. Call you as soon as we get the first one in. Jetta, Beetle, what would you like?
Convertible Beetle.
Well done.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Good. Mary, you got a comment?
You know, I just wanted to say that, you know, I appreciate all the work that goes in to bringing businesses to the forefront, to hiring people. There's a lot of people behind what you see up here. These two gentlemen, this family over here, there's a lot of people behind that we don't see that are working a lot of hours to bring the economy forward and to bring people to work. And we need to appreciate that because we need each other, and this is what builds our community. And that's what we're about, building a community. So I really appreciate, look forward to you guys on your grand opening.
Thank you.
Mike, you have a comment?
Yeah, I had just one comment. I know I've, I've had the, I guess, the luxury of meeting several of the Earnhardt's, and I've purchased several cars from the dealerships. And I think I met you, in fact, when you first came to town. And I think I know where you live. And I have one of my Kias sitting in your service bay as we speak. But I know the service and the professionalism that Earnhardt brings. And I know that, that will be additional, I think, synergies with your other dealerships that will help bring customers through Prescott Valley as well. So again, welcome to Prescott Valley, and it's an opportunity for our community and obviously an opportunity for you. So we're looking forward to that relationship.
Thank you. We're happy to be here.
Good. Any other questions?
How about a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
How about a motion? Yes, we're ready.
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 1904 approving the proposed development agreement with Presley Investments LLC and Earnhardt entity for development of a Volkswagen dealership by electronic vote.
Second, anyone?
I'd like to do that.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote? And again, I count nine votes. I guess, for seven of us, that's pretty good.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Thank you guys again. Look forward to both of you, both companies, to be here.
Thank you.
And they'll support each other. Okay, now, next we move on to E, consideration of approving an agreement with the Slide Experts in the amount of $14,900 for Mountain Valley Splash Pool Slide Road Restoration Project. Jason?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, bringing in front of you, a proposal for some renovations to the Mountain Valley Park, Mountain Valley Splash Pool and Mushroom Structure. Originally built in 1995, this hasn't been completed since then. It's been about 20 years. The gel coating, been worn off a little. A lot of patrons going up and down the slides. So we are looking to renovate these slides and have these services refinished. The company, the low bid was the Slide Experts. They're out of the Denver, Colorado area. They came in at 14, 9. They're a highly recommended company from across the country. And we are looking to have them come in starting in March. It's going to be dependent on the ambient temperature. And any questions?
Questions, anyone? I remember that being built. I was on the council when it was done.
I recall.
It's a great project.
Yeah, I recall you telling me about it, yes.
Any other comments? Mary?
No, sir.
Rick?
I was just curious how many people actually go up the slide.
Well, when we wax it every year, there's quite a few of us, because that's what we have to do to keep her going.
Laura?
I just wanted to say, when I was at the Polar Bear Splash this year, I was kind of taking close look at everything because I knew this was coming forward. And I'm just so glad we're there and it's funded. And I'm also delighted that we're including the mushroom water feature because it's looking not so happy.
It, it does look a little sun-baked. Yes.
Any other comments? Mike?
I was going to say the same thing. I think when I've been there, it's a destination for a lot of the families in Prescott Valley. And I'm glad we're able to reinvest in that, give it a little makeover, and we can use it for another 20 years.
Absolutely.
It's a great investment.
Any other questions? Jason, I think you've done a good job, Dan. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
A motion, anyone?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. Consideration of approving agreement with Slide Experts in an amount of $14,900 for the Mountain Valley Splash Pool Slide Restoration Project, CIP number P376 by electronic vote.
Second, Dan, Mayor.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Dan?
Councilmember Anderson, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And Jason, you can go to work.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, move on. Next to F, public hearing, ZOA 14-001, Chapter 14 subdivision is conforming amendments to Chapter 7 building and Chapter 13 zoning to the town code. And I don't know if you did all this, Carmen, but it's one huge job.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a presentation. Thank you for your patience there. Yes, boy, this is really exciting. I'm so glad to, to be able to come up and present this to you this evening. It's been a collaboration of a lot of different town staff, the legal department, Public Works, the Planning Commission, and the Arts and Culture Commission. So here we are this evening, finally, with the document that we're going to ask you to consider, the amendment to the subdivision ordinance. Now, with this particular amendment, there are three parts to it. The public hearing, and then the following two items, Item G and Item H, which I will be presenting a brief presentation summarizing what, what we've done so that the people here in the audience and the people at home have an idea of all that was put into this. And so then I'll sit down and let you do your, your thing. So. So an overview, I have, we've set goals, strategies. I'd like to present the process that we went through and the summary of significant changes that we've done to the document and what we have left. The goals that we set out were to help realize the community's vision as articulated in the General Plan 2025. We've tried to protect the character of Prescott Valley with this document, added value to the community, and we were providing guidance to staff, the community, and developers. Strategies that we've used are to remove redundant and verbose language. We've updated definitions, updated processes, developed heightened site design elements, added visuals and graphics, and we're also updating the general plan and the town code for consistency. So the process involved initial scoping and analysis, staff draft of the ordinance, then a lot of work with the legal department to try to make sure that everything was right. We've taken the document to the Planning Commission in December, and they have recommended approval of the document. We've also asked the Arts and Culture Commission for their recommendation regarding street furniture, which is an added element that we're adding to the document to try to, to make sure that the subdivisions that are coming into Prescott Valley will have quality and standards in them. And then what's left is council review and, and adoption, and that's the, the point where we are here. So the significant changes that we've made to the document, we've updated the definitions, the procedures, the street and utility improvement requirements. PAD, which is the planned area development requirements, are now for any developments over 40 acres. Master development plans are required for all developments over 100 acres. We've included a flow chart to aid with the visualization. We've added a design element table, and we've updated street cross-sections and added multi-use path updates, which is also an added kind of design element that we've actually incorporated into Prescott Valley, but, but we needed to put into, into this document. So those updates are now consistent with it, or will be consistent with the general plan. Additionally, we've updated financial assurances to protect the community in the town. We've added trust agreement and title hold to accepted methods of assurance. And we've also put in a clause for abandoned final plats that they revert back to acreage. So those, those are the key points that we've done to this document. It was a real comprehensive update, which the document, the previous document was, was produced in 1980 and hadn't really been updated since that time. So Planning Commission recommended approval of the amendments on December 8. The Arts and Culture was, was asked for their recommendation of the approval of street furniture last night. And here's the document now for, for your consideration. And again, if you could please look at the three items, the public hearing, and then the resolution, and then reading of the ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, anyone? I think you did a super job on that. I don't know if you did, apparently you didn't do it alone, but that was a huge job.
Thank you, Mayor. I had much help, and I really want to thank Carol Cornell.
Very well done. Other comments, questions? Anyone from the public here to comment? If there's no further comment, then I would declare the public hearing closed.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up, by all means. I'm glad you, we finally get a comment from you.
Hi, thank you. I'm Amber Hudson, and I'm a Prescott Valley resident. And it's actually, I feel like I was meant to be here tonight because I moved here in 2005. And the first job I ever had was with the Earnhardt Organization. And those gentlemen who are here, I worked with Mr. Clark. And when I started a family, we decided to relocate here to Prescott Valley after researching the area that this would be the best place to raise my child. And so we ended up here and started elementary school. My son went to school here in Prescott Valley. High school, he's a high school freshman now, anyhow. So the, the reason I'm here is, we looked up this town, and it was a great place to have your family. But now my son's a teenager, and we've run out of options for activities and recreation for children who are teenagers.
You addressing the issue.
Oh, no, I'm just addressing public comments. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're not ready to.
Okay, well, I'll come back.
Yeah, we, we do, we're required by law to stick with the, with the issue, agenda item. Anyone else have any comments? If not, then I would declare the public hearing closed. And we move on to G, consideration of approving Resolution Number 1897 declaring the document amendments to Chapter 14 subdivision, Chapter 13 zoning, and Chapter 7 building of the town code to be public record. I think that Carmen has pretty well explained it. But if there's any questions, comments, or, or motion?
Do you want to make a motion, anybody? I can't read it.
I think we're ready. Ivan says yes.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to, to make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to authorize a mayor or in his absence, a vice mayor to sign Resolution Number 1897 declaring the document amendments to Chapter 14 subdivisions, Chapter 13 zoning, and Chapter 7 building of the town code to be public record for the adoption by reference.
I will second.
You have a second? Motion of a second? You set the vote? And that passes. Okay, thank you. And then we, we need another motion to read Ordinance 801 by title only? Anyone ready for that?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to read Ordinance Number 801 by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on a final passage by electronic vote.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, with a motion and a second, you set the vote, Dan?
We're a very shy group tonight.
And that passes. With that, then I would ask Tony Clark to read the Ordinance 801 by title only for the first reading, Dan?
An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference a document entitled Amendments to Chapter 14 Subdivisions, Chapter 7 Building, and fourteen subdivisions, Chapter seven building, and Chapter thirteen zoning, declared by resolution number eighteen ninety-seven to be a public record, which amends Chapter fourteen subdivisions, Chapter thirteen zoning, and Chapter seven building of the town code to conform to the town's general plan twenty twenty-five and provide greater flexibility in design, density, and development requirements for projects subject to development plans, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the town code not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective thirty days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, Diane. With that, we'll move on then to number H.
No, I.
I, I'm sorry. Public hearing again. Yeah, public, public hearing again. I declared it open as regarding the general plan amendment GPA fourteen zero zero seven. Again, Carmen?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The GPA fourteen zero zero seven is a conforming amendment to the general plan while doing the update. It was noticed that we needed to amend the cross-section designs, the diagrams, which are on the overhead screen. It just needed some minor adjustments to add again the multi-use paths and add an additional minor collector street. And so as with the other item, there's three parts to this, the public hearing, then the resolution, and then consideration of reading the ordinance. Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Any from the public? If not, I would declare the hearing closed, and we'll go on to J. Consideration of approving resolution number nineteen oh three, adopting a minor amendment to the Prescott Valley general plan twenty twenty-five GPA fourteen zero zero seven.
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve resolution number nineteen oh three, adopting a minor amendment to the Prescott Valley general plan twenty twenty-five GPA one four dash zero zero seven by electronic vote.
Second, anyone? We have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote? And that passes. Thank you. Okay, we go on to K. Consideration of reading ordinance number eight oh two, once by title only as an emergency measure, then place the same on final passage proposed annexation ANX fourteen zero zero one of approximately fifty-eight acres. Richard?
Thank you, Mayor. If you'd indulge me just for a moment, I did want to recognize Carmen did point out that many people contributed to the last body of work, and it's unusual for me to recognize Ivan Legler, and I need to take that, I think, one time in my career here. Ivan showed enormous tolerance for change, and I want to acknowledge that. And not only did he let us borrow, as always, our paralegal in the community development department, Carol Cornell, she did a lion's share of the drafting of the document. Carol interfaced directly with Ivan, as did I. We had a lot of struggling with ideas on how to approach this, but as a result of that, we have a clearer, more concise way to help developers develop property here in Prescott Valley. And one of his major contributions was his tolerance to look at different ways to provide assurances that public infrastructure be placed properly, and I applaud you. That shows that he is moving away from his training as a lawyer, and he's becoming more and more a planner. So with that, my compliment.
You know, Richard, medicine really does wonders.
He keeps sipping that tea, so I'm going to keep giving him that tea. With that, Mayor, and, you know, all seriousness, I appreciate that relationship. You're considering annexation of fifty-eight acres. You previously looked at this in a public hearing, took public comment. This is necessary, obviously, because you are also planning to build or you're under construction on the road called Enterprise Parkway. This property would correspond to that island between Enterprise Parkway and the Prescott Valley Business Park and Big Sky Industrial Park comprising fifty-eight acres. You held a public hearing. We circulated the necessary consent petitions. We received greater than fifty-one percent of the property owners in that area consenting to and requesting annexation. We would recommend your approval.
Questions, anyone? Comments? Movements? Mike?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion. Motion to read ordinance number eight oh two, once by title only as an emergency measure, then place the same on final passage, or motion to read ordinance number eight oh two by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage. If the motion passes...
Or should I read that? No, that's... We have to have a choice, either read it once by emergency or twice on a regular. So which would it be?
Shall we read it once?
Read it once, okay. Second, anyone?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have the motion in two seconds. Would you set the vote? And that passes. With that, I would ask Tom Clark to read that by title only as an emergency measure. That's ordinance number eight oh two. Diane?
Ordinance number eight oh two. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, annexing thereto certain real property containing approximately fifty-eight acres lying in a portion of section twenty township fourteen north, range one east of the Gila and Salt River Basin, Meridian, Yavapai County, Arizona. Classifying all of the annexed property from zoning purposes as RCU dash seventy, being consistent with the present Yavapai County zoning classification of RCU dash two A, providing that the official town map and the town zoning map be appropriately amended, and that a copy of this ordinance along with the certified annexation map be recorded in the office of the Yavapai County Recorder, and declaring this ordinance to be an emergency measure pursuant to Arizona revised statutes, section nineteen dash one forty-two B, and town code Chapter two dash zero five dash zero six zero.
Thank you, Diane. With that, I would ask, shall the ordinance pass? Could you set the vote, Diane?
You can wait a couple of seconds. I'll be right out.
Oh, Rick isn't here. We can, I'm going to ask him what his vote is. It passes regardless.
We've got it passed.
Okay, it passes. Okay, we'll move on then to L. Consideration of approving amendment for out-of-scope services with CH two M Hill slash OMI in the amount of not to exceed hundred eight thousand eight sixty-six forty in a budget transfer to complete the TGB installation of your Granite View tank. Neil?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item in your packet, it's fairly straightforward, and I know you've probably all read it, but what it didn't have in there was some nice pictures. So I actually put together a very brief PowerPoint presentation, maybe take five minutes, but just to give you an idea of what, kind of what's going to go on. But just as a summary, what we're proposing to do is put a radio tower at our Granite View tank site, and this tower would essentially be the last tower, the second one, that we need for our radio read metering system, and it will essentially complete the coverage that we have, radio coverage throughout the town, so that all of the meters would then be able to communicate through radio up to the towers and here to the civic center. We can't currently reach everywhere in town, but with this, we'll probably be ninety-nine point nine percent. And so that's what we're going to be doing, and because we don't have power at the site, we're going to need some solar panels and so forth. I think there's some drawings in your package that kind of show what the equipment is, but let me just briefly run through this, and then if I've left anything out, I'd be happy to answer any questions. So as I've said, our goal is to expand our radio coverage for the metering reading, to get all the dead spots in town. In addition to that, the Prescott Valley Police Department is very interested in that site to improve their radio coverage in areas such as Stone Ridge and down in Prescott Country Club, and so that'll, they will utilize that tower also. So what it's going to be is a seventy-five-foot tall tower, put a concrete foundation, couple of solar panels, the cabinets and the radios, and the proposed contract with OMI is a hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty cents. So this is the round, the round object there off to the left of your screen is the Granite View tank. It is a little bit northwest of Home Depot. That's what you see in the lower part, the big white roof area, and due west of the Kia dealership. And so that tank is actually not visible from Prescott Valley. Where you can see it is if you're on Highway sixty-nine in the Diamond Valley area coming into town, and you look up, there's a draw there. You can look up, you will see the tank from that location, but as you can see, there's a, it's kind of cut out, so it's hidden from view here. Another shot of this, the proposed equipment would go on the left side of the tank, the tower, as well as all the equipment is going to be down, ground level inside the fence, and so probably half of the seventy-five-foot length of the tower will also be hidden from This is the, just an illustration of what the tower would look like. It's about an eighteen-inch, it's a three-legged tower, eighteen by eighteen by eighteen. That's kind of what it would look like. And so this is a view from down by Stone Ridge Drive, looking up, right directly up at the Kia dealership, up to the tank site location, and you can see, you don't see the tank, okay, but it's back around there a little ways and cut in. This is another view, and on the left-hand side next to the speed limit sign, you can see a cut. That's the road going up to the tank, and it zigzags back and forth a little bit, but you still can't see the tank from that location. And so here on the tank site, I'm showing a picture of where the equipment's going to go, right towards the back of the fence here on the westerly side of the tank. This shows the front of the tank where you enter, and you can see the embankment there that starts to hide the tank from either due south or from Prescott Valley, and that embankment, as you'll see, actually goes up higher than the side of the tank as we get around there. So again, sort of from the front side, you can see that it's fairly well covered from the south. This is standing up almost directly east of the tank, and you can see that the cut is as tall as the tank there, and so, like I said, everything's going to be mounted down next to the tank. The tower's going to be seventy-five feet tall, and so you'll really only see the top half of it. I don't know if there's any other questions related to the contract or anything, but that's pretty much what I wanted to present, so if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those for you.
Questions, anyone? Then Laura?
It's a good plan.
Laura says it's a good plan, so. It looks good. Mike?
Yeah, I just had a comment. I think the project we've embarked on relative to this project's going to complete it, as you mentioned, and I think it's something that's very worthwhile because it does offset, I think, expenses, people, power, and other expenses we might incur. So I think, and especially as a resident of Stone Ridge, I think it'll be beneficial to them as well. So I think it's a great addition, and I think it's time to complete it. I think we ought to get it done, so.
Yeah, there?
And we have the benefit to the police department.
Yeah.
That's a win-win.
Good. Motion, anyone?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve the amendment for the out-of-scope services with CA two M Hill MI in the amount not to exceed a hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty cents, and the budget transfer to complete the TGB installation at Granite View tank by electronic vote.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the motion and a second. Would you set the vote? And that passes. Neil? Passes. Go for it. Good job, by the way. Okay, with that, we go on to our consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments, which we'd like, those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Thank you.
Forgive me for commenting on the wrong project.
That's all right. You're probably not used to our process.
No, and it was actually a recommendation more so.
Keep coming. You'll get used to it.
Thank you. My son, like I mentioned, is a freshman in high school.
By the way, if you would, again, introduce yourself, as your name for the record.
Amber Hudson, and I'm a Prescott Valley resident. My family has lived here for ten years, and my son is a freshman in high school, which has become an issue. We love this town, and I have two daughters who are eleven and nine, but our, my high schooler has run out of things to do in town, and he is part of that crowd who would go to the movie theater and not have anything to do, and ended up loitering because there's only so much for the children to do, and we can only budget so much every week for my child to have activities to do. So of course, they were curfued, or, you know, their curfew was in place at the entertainment district, and the kids now on Wednesdays, I've noticed, have come here to the library, and they loiter because there's nothing else for them to do, and there's hundreds of these high school kids who just don't have enough recreational activities. And I've been keeping an eye on the agendas to see if there's anything in place for teenagers, and I don't think in my son's time here in Prescott Valley that there's anything on the plan, but I'd like to make the recommendation to maybe put something in place for the teenagers because I love this town, and I really don't want to see the children, my children or anybody else's children, just fall into a bad path because there's not anything for them to do, like a rec center or anything of that nature. The Mountain Valley Splash Park is a great facility, this pool, the ice skating things that the town hosts. It's really great, but I think we're missing this key age group that's really critical to their adulthood. I mean, these kids are going to start making poor decisions because they don't have those things to really keep them active anymore at that age. And yes, there's a lot of things to do for young children, but it just kind of fizzles out and loses interest, and I would hope that we can possibly get a rec center or something that is more economical for families who were working hard, that we can't spend a lot of money per week or per month for our children to go out and do activities, and even if there were, there's not sports for the high school kids unless they're in high school, and even if you're not athletic, then what? Then what do the children do? So I just wanted to step up and, as a concerned parent, say that I would recommend that the town maybe adopt some type of a plan for teenagers or activities or recreational site if it can be added to Mountain Valley Park. I know there is a lot of things there to do, and there's the skate park and things like that, which not every child has a skateboard. So what about those kids? And they hang out under the Ramada. So I just wanted to just step up and make that recommendation because that's why we love this town, and that's why we moved here, was to have a great place for our children, and now that we have to find other things for my high schooler, and I just, I hope that we can find more in the future.
I appreciate that. And there's a gentleman right back there with the dark hair named Brian Witty. Could you get in touch with him? He raised his hand there.
I will.
Laura, you had a comment?
I wanted, yes, I was going to tell you the same. Are you aware of the incredible programs available from the teen department right here in this building?
No.
There's an incredible teen librarian here. I encourage you to check that out.
Okay.
Because you're right, every youngster is not necessarily interested in sports. And on Brian Witty's behalf, they have amazing programs for parks and recreation for young people.
Okay, great.
And please check them all out. Do we want a recreational center? Yes.
Good.
Brian, do you have your phone number so this lady could call you?
Yes, sir. Seven five nine three zero nine zero.
Seven five nine three zero.
Nine zero.
Nine zero. Okay, great. Now, give him a call.
I will.
But you're also welcome to stop and visit myself or anyone here, including the But you're also welcome to stop and visit myself or anyone here, including the town manager. We do appreciate it.
Well, thank you for your time, and I will look into those. Thank you.
We appreciate your comment. Any other comments? Kirk, any comments? Come on, you're good. Okay, if there is no other comments.
Mr. Mayor, I thought I would just kind of throw out something.
Oh, sure.
We do have other resources in the community. I think we have a Boys and Girls Club that not necessarily is targeted to teens, but I think the Boys and Girls Club could, would welcome, I think, teens, which is next to the skate park, and I know that Prescott, as another example, has a teen center that's looking for a new home.
I, actually, if I can comment on that really quick. I grew up in the Boys and Girls Club. I loved that facility, and they actually saved me from a troubled path that I was taking in my teenage years, and I was fortunate enough to be at the Grant Woods Branch in Mesa. It was a brand-new facility, it was beautiful, and our center here, it's, it could use some work. Just, my son, like, he's not a, he's not spoiled by any means, but there's just really not enough there to keep him interested, enough activities, and if we could, if that place could grow, that would be amazing. I would love to have my son in Boys and Girls Club, but it's just, doesn't have the resources available to him there at this time, and I don't know if that's in their plan either. I would love to see it grow, and I would be very supportive of that, and I'm sure a lot of parents in the community would support that as well. It's definitely a place that helped me in my childhood, and.
Well, there is a teen center in Prescott that's looking for a new home, so if you have a group that's willing to get involved and maybe pursue that to see if you could bring them to Prescott Valley, but just a thought, yes.
Thank you.
I think we'd be happy to hear your suggestion, especially Mr. Witty.
I will.
He's doing a great job, by the way. He does a super job, so. The more suggestions we get, the better, more we can do.
Thank you.
So be sure and give him a call, okay?
I will.
And schedule an appointment with him.
I'll make sure I get in contact with all those parents of the kids who play football on the lawn outside.
Wonderful, thank you.
Have a good day.
Good job. Okay, we have one more item on our agenda, and I know everyone hates it, and that's adjournment. Anyone could make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion, a motion in a second.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, would you set the vote, Diane?
Great.
And that passes. Thank you all for coming. Good job.